I'd like to call to order the February 15, 2012, meeting of the Milton School Committee, and as is our custom, invite you to stand and salute the flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as we're getting underway, I just ask again, are there any additions, corrections, amendments to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we will get started. Do we have a citizen's speak list? Or do we have anyone for citizen's speak? Let's put it that way. No? Then we will move on to our minutes of the school committee meeting of January 18.
Move approval.
Moved approval by Mr. Walker.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kelly. Any corrections, comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes of January 18? Opposed, abstaining? One abstention. Or with the Lee abstains. All right, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Superintendent Gordley.
Thank you, Chairman Pavlicek. I'd like to move to the presentation area and ask to join us up at the table Rebecca Lieberman and her mother and father, Charles and Leslie Lieberman. Would you come right up? So this is the school committee's meeting, but we have found this a very appropriate forum to make this presentation each year. And so the organization of superintendents have every superintendent in the state of Massachusetts award the student who is top of the class during the school year. And this just isn't your top of the class, number one in the class. This is an individual and an award that goes to somebody who has multi-talents. And every year, I'm very interested by the school committee's reaction, and I always feel that every citizen, every teacher, the school committee and I take pride in your accomplishments and share it with Rebecca and her mother and father and her family. And to me, the message always is to every parent of a kindergarten or any grade, you know, these gifts are here and the Milton Public Schools will enable you to develop those gifts. And so I am so proud today, and it might be difficult for you, but it's going to make your mother and father and the school committee and the community very, very proud. So I want to begin by Rebecca's guidance counselor is Ms. Leonise Bernard. And Leonise writes that Rebecca is clearly one of the most gifted students that Leonise has ever worked with. Leonise was chosen by the college board to be an AP scholar with honors for her outstanding scores on her AP exams. Although Rebecca excels in academics and every person who met you mentioned your musical accomplishments, I believe she is also one of the most musically talented students at our high school, writes Leonise. She has played the piano for most of her life and she also plays the guitar. Last year, I saw Rebecca in the school's cabaret and she was incredibly, and I was incredibly impressed by her performance. She also arranged a Motown medley and accompanied her peers with the piano. Rebecca has an amazing voice and a natural music ability that knows no limits. She is, in a word, phenomenal. In her soon senior portfolio, Rebecca talked about the incredible five-week summer program she participated in at Berklee School of Music last summer before her junior year. She described it as life-changing. Her teachers write, "Rebecca is one of the most capable students I have ever had," writes the U.S. honors teacher, "history teacher. She has the academic ability to do whatever she wants in life. Rebecca is an incredible young woman. She is a good person and a good friend. I cannot say enough about her." From her music teacher in the music department, Rebecca's work is of the highest quality. She balances a busy schedule with music and academics. She is humble and always sensitive to those around her. She is self-motivated. She was a solo singer-performer, and I believe Ms. Begley-Jones was referring to this, at Faneuil Hall during the summer to make money for college. Rebecca has been a leader in all of the groups that she has participated in. She ran chorus rehearsals and she has been the lead, she was the lead in Footloose this year. "In my 25-plus years of teaching," writes the teacher, "I have never met a mature and brilliant student. I have absolute faith that she will be an asset to the best schools she chooses to go on to." Now, I have her academic record over her four years at Milton High School, and as Ms. Bernard writes, she has earned all As. And just let me tell you the caseload that she's, the course load she's carrying. She's in physical education, AP English literature, AP Calculus BC, AP Physics, aren't these something, Dr. Pavlicek? U.S. History II, AP Microeconomics, Jazz Ensemble, Mixed Chorus, and an independent study. Rebecca Lieberman has earned the number one in her place in her GPA in her senior class at Milton High School. She has been in the National Honor Society in her junior and senior year, Tri-Music Honor Society Junior and Senior Year President this year. I mentioned she was the AP Scholar with Honors. Milton High School Century Club, top 100 students, first, second, third year, and the program hasn't happened this year. Site Council, her second year, soccer, again athletics, JV and varsity, lacrosse, captain of the French club, best buddy, selected by audition to perform in junior and senior semesters in District 1, 2, and 3, chorus all four years, president this year, chorus all-state, her second and third year, piano for 12 years. So it is my great honor to award the certificate of academic excellence for having duly qualified Rebecca Lieberman under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents for this very esteemed award. And nothing could make me prouder or happier. Congratulations. So I didn't tell you, you might want to say a few words. I think I may have said it all, but... So Mr. and Mrs. Lieberman, Rebecca? School committee members.
Rebecca, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for the award.
Well-earned and well-deserved.
Thank you.
And we, of course, are very proud of her. She deserves it. She has worked hard her four years and her whole life. She puts her all into whatever she takes on.
And Rebecca started with us. We asked what elementary school she went to?
Cunningham. Yeah.
School committee members?
Kristin.
I just have to say that I've known of Rebecca from other kids who said, "Oh, you've got to get Rebecca to perform at the walk. You've got to get Rebecca to do this." And at the walk, she unfortunately had to leave. She was due to perform and she had to leave to go play lacrosse. So I just think that's very telling of who Rebecca is. She was all ready to perform, but then she had to leave us to go to lacrosse. So she is going to come to my house and perform for my family, and anyone else can come as well. But I've just heard such wonderful things about you from the kids and from fame and from the parents about you. It's really impressive. You are really impressive.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help with the walk, too.
Rebecca, thank you for your accomplishments and congratulations. I say thank you because really you have put to use all the, all that's available to you in the Milton Public Schools, and you just make us feel proud. And I'm sure we haven't heard the last of you, of your name. We'll hear much more about you in the years to come. Congratulations to Mom and Dad, too.
Thank you.
I would like to say that I met Rebecca in my freshman year when I came here, and I still remember like somewhat when I first saw her. And my sophomore year, we had a, we had a first class to get her, and she was like really brilliant. She's like, she's really smart. And I think she's really inspirational, and I kind of like look somewhat up to her, or everybody does somewhat. So, yeah, congratulations.
Awesome. Well said.
Well, I want to say something about Stephen because I've talked to my parents about Stephen before, too, and I have said that I look up to Stephen because he came here from Haiti and he's just like the epitome of a success story, and he's in all honors classes, and he's so smart, and the feelings are mutual.
And round of applause. Well, again, your athletics, your music, your academics, we wish you every success in the days as you finish your senior year and in the years to come. And Mr. and Mrs. Lieberman, congratulations. Rebecca?
Thank you.
Very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to invite up the Glover Site Council led by Principal Stephanie Nephew. And Stephanie, would you make the introductions and come right up to the table?
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Nephew, the proud principal of the Glover Elementary School. I'm here tonight with Kristen Smith and Chase Eschozier, both fifth-grade teachers at the Glover, as well as members of the school Site Council. And we're here tonight to present our school improvement plan. Our Site Council consists of myself, three teachers, as well as three parents. We meet monthly, and one of our major tasks as a Site Council is to develop the school improvement plan. Last year, I presented as a first-year principal, and I will say that the, the work of developing the plan this year has been very rewarding, having the opportunity to see the school year in completion and to really get a sense of the needs of the school. Just to start, as a foundation, to talk a little bit about the data from Glover. The slide showcases our AYP report card from this year. As you can see, we made AYP in both English and math this year. We did not meet the target in English, but we made appropriate gains which allowed us to make AYP. In math, we did make the target, and we showed significant progress in both ELA and math for our special ed subgroup, which also, again, allowed us to make AYP. This is the second year in a row that we've made AYP, and as a result, we were able to take, come off of the no-child-left-behind accountability status. So that was a good news story for Glover this year. One thing I wanted to showcase in terms of our results, we saw some significant gains in our special ed subgroup scores. If you can see from this chart, in terms of our progress this year, we improved 7.3 points in ELA and 19.9 points in math, which is very significant. And also, if you look at our proficient and advanced scores for English in our special ed subgroup, we went up 22% and went up 16% when getting students in our special ed subgroup into proficient and advanced. So something that's worth noting. Important to also look at our, our growth percentile data. So the top charts indicates our median percentile growth for our school. We were at 62.5% for our ELA scores, which was an increase by 6.5%, and we were at 62% in math. I just was at a MCAS workshop a couple days ago, and when talking about these growth percentile medians, the gentleman that was presenting was sharing that the, the majority of schools are in the 40% to 60% range. And so when they're above that, it's showing some significant growth. But of course, we also want to look at the scores in terms of being in proficient and advanced, and we also see a nice gain there. We went up from 80 to 84% in proficient and advanced in ELA, and then we went from 67% to 80%, going up 13% in proficient and advanced in math. So we did see some, some nice gains at Glover last year.
So, you know, after looking at all that data, the question sort of becomes, what are we going to do with that? And looking at that data, in addition to data over the past several years, along with what we just saw, more recent data from last year, we're talking about identifying focus areas for improvement, and that's what we do as a Site Council. So you can see some of those behind me. Math, we're looking at measurement, geometry, patterns, relations, algebra, symbols. Those are areas we're looking to improve in math. For ELA, I'll probably need to maybe explain a little bit of these a little bit more in-depth. Long composition is one area of improvement that we're looking to, to work on. That's more narrative story writing versus an open response, which is reading or writing in response to literature. Reading a selection, answering questions about it in a longer format. Poetry, we're looking to encourage kids and work on ways to get kids to read between the lines, read sort of beyond the lines, and just sort of making meaning out of poetry, making inferences, determining meaning from their text, and able to sort of come to their own conclusions. So these are the things we're looking to work on.
What we saw when we were really picking apart the questions and sort of examining where our kids struggled, it is the higher-order thinking. So when they're reading a passage, they, as Chase shared, reading on the line, so really that concrete comprehension our students are doing very well at. But then when they need to read between the lines and make some inferences and try to then answer a question like open response, where they have to show evidence to support their thinking, those are the areas that we see we need to continue to work on and improve. And so some, some of the work that you'll see in some of our action steps really focus on that.
So one thing, one thing we stress at Glover is the importance of creating high academic achievement or striving for high academic achievement across all students. And one way that we do that is we have several members of the Glover staff who are involved in things like curriculum teams and grade-level facilitators. What the curriculum teams do, there's an English Language Arts and a Math Curriculum Team that gets together at the elementary level across the district, and they're really looking at these Common Core standards. We're making, we're in transition right now from the Massachusetts State Standards to the Common Core standards. And what these curriculum teams do is they get together, they look at the standards, they talk about the curriculum we have as it is now, they create trajectories based on the standard, the Common Core standards that we are transitioning into. They create, they're in the process, both in ELA and in particular in math, in creating common assessments, unit assessments in math, mid-year assessments in ELA and in math, that are consistent across all four schools to make sure that at all four schools, we are covering absolutely everything we need to cover. We are exposing our, our students to the same standards, the same information, and we're holding them to that high standard. As grade-level facilitators, we meet once a month. At the grade, at Glover School, there's a teacher from every grade level who meets with Tucker Cunningham and Colicott teachers at the same grade level. We talk about, again, the work being done in the curriculum teams. We discuss things that are working in our classrooms, things that are working in other classrooms. We're trying to push each other to, you know, improve our education of these students, make our teaching as effective as possible. And we do that once a month with the help of Holly Concanon, who's the math curriculum coordinator, Martha Sherman, who does the language arts. And we, it's really, it's, it's been an awesome opportunity for us to really just collaborate, and especially in this transition to the new standards.
One of the focuses that we've had at Glover is to really create a culture where data drives instruction. So really be thoughtful about understanding where our kids are and where they need to go. So of course, curriculum is a key component of that, but if we don't understand our kids, we don't know where to start from. So some of the work that we began with at the beginning of the school year was to really look at the MCAS data as one tool to understand our students. So we provided for every teacher in grades three, four, and five, binders of data that outlined the results of their students from the year prior, and then also information about the students that they were going to, that they were receiving that year, and really looked at a variety of different ways to examine the data. So objective summaries, looking at the standards, how they did within their class, but then specifically for every single student, how that student did on open response, open response, nonfiction, poetry, so that they can begin to understand each individual child's strengths and weaknesses to develop action plans for the classroom. In addition to the MCAS data, we're really looking at the unit assessments that have been developed through these curriculum teams to really understand the kids throughout the school year. We'll talk about some flexible grouping that we have developed, and all of that is driven from the assessments. In addition to that, we are utilizing some of the faculty meeting time to analyze student work. So teachers will bring work samples to the, to the faculty meetings. We've developed a protocol where we analyze the student work. We have conversations as a staff around what we see, what's the evidence of understanding, and what kinds of things we, do we need to do, what's the implication for classroom instruction. And really having the teachers begin to understand that importance of constantly assessing our kids and using that assessment to drive the next classroom instruction piece. So I just mentioned flexible grouping. We're exploring ways to utilize classroom time to meet individual students' needs. So this year, in grade three, we are piloting some flexible grouping in math, and what it looks like is we've creatively put together some additional staff during a 45-minute block to allow for small group instruction. Our classes are about 10 to 12 students per group, and we have selected topics that we see that students might need some additional support in or some additional enrichment. And we look at the data. So it might be, for example, I think the first unit we started with was measurement. So we looked at the data, we understood our kids, and we grouped them based on what we thought they needed in terms of measurement. And so for a three-week block for 45 minutes each week, the groups met in small groups, 10, 10 to 12 students, and we targeted the instruction based on their needs. So again, making sure that we're using the data to help understand how to service them, and then thinking creatively in terms of how we can group kids to address those needs. I think the added benefit that we've seen from these flexible groups is, one, the ability to have conversations with staff around what the needs are and really think about that targeted instruction, and two, the ability to, it has sort of spurred conversations around what that instruction should look like. So the coming together and sort of regrouping kids has sort of brought this group of teachers together in a way that I think will only improve instruction, not just for flexible grouping, but for their math instruction in general.
Another way at Glover, we've sort of extended the learning, not just to, during school hours, but we've been able to take before and after-school time and organize a before and after-school enrichment program that consists of various classes. And I've had the pleasure of being able to sort of organize that, recruiting teachers to teach courses, both before school and after school. And we've had, you know, a school newspaper, and you can see a picture of that behind me, where students are writing articles. It's been a, a chance for them to really extend their writing abilities beyond the classroom. We've had a couple different musical theater classes, art classes. There's a sports class that's coming up soon focusing on soccer. There's been math, science. I mean, really across the board, there've been a bunch of different opportunities for kids to sort of extend their learning after the school day is over or before. And we've also been able to offer scholarship opportunities for kids who maybe can't afford those courses because they are for pay, but we have offered scholarships to, to families to really make them available to everyone. So that's been a, sort of a great additional resource we've been able to do at Glover.
Another thing we've done at Glover this year is we've increased the inclusion of special education services into the general ed classrooms. That's across service providers, kids who benefit from extra support, reading and math, as well as occupational therapy, speech therapy. We've seen, the benefits to that are the generalization of the skills being taught in the small group setting to the whole class, to the regular education setting. It's also prevents the missing of instruction time and has been beneficial, not only to those children who we have recognized as requiring the services, but also to the other students in the class who now have access to a, a special educator, an occupational therapist in the classroom setting.
Another thing that we started this year to really think about how we meet the needs of a continuum of learners, one of my, as I reflected over the year last year, in finishing the first year at Glover, one of the things that I felt like we really need to improve was how we recognize students. I watched end-of-the-year award ceremonies and said, "That was a missed opportunity. We need to be recognizing kids throughout the year." And so we now do award ceremonies once a term, and we call them well-done awards. And what we do is allow teachers to select students for a variety of different reasons. So it can be anything from improvement in reading, or showing great compassion, or always modeling good behavior. And what I share with the students is when you list, hear the different well-done awards and you hear the reasons for students to receive these awards, it kind of showcases what makes a excellent student. You list all of these different qualities, and when you put it all together, that's what we're striving for. So I think it helps model all the different pieces we're looking for in a student, and it is an opportunity to recognize that a student's doing one piece really well, but it also helps us remember that there's a lot of different things that we're working on. So we do those, we've started that this year, and the students have really responded very well to them. And a couple students, you know, after the ceremony said, "I think I'm really going to get an award next, next time for being really kind." Awesome. So I think that they, they strive to do well, they like being recognized, and it's an opportunity for teachers to be able to recognize students that are, are thriving in the classroom.
So a lot of our professional development at Glover this year has also been centered on writing and increasing writing across the curriculum. And one thing we've done at Glover is, in the fifth grade, we've created a writer's workshop. So at the beginning of the year, as a fifth-grade team with Mrs. Nephew, we got together and we creatively found ways to utilize staff and resources in classrooms to minimize class size in order to minimize, maximize the effectiveness of writing instruction. So three times a week for 50 minutes, the fifth grade is dispersed, they're integrated French and English, special education, regular education, into five classrooms where we do, we teach, specifically focus on writing and across a variety of genres. Recently, we did a whole unit on writing and math where we focused on getting the students to explain their thinking in math. And what we did was we gave everybody a job, and we gave everybody a salary, and then we made everybody pay taxes, and then we made them, you know, pay for gas and get a car, and, and it was really as a, as a... And it was really as a way to get them, doing the calculations and having fun while doing it. And the way we taught writing in, explaining their thinking in math is through double-sided journals. So every student was given a double-sided journal, and I'll pass these around so you can see them because they're really excellent. This particular student was a chemical engineer. And so they were given a question, a prompt. In this case, she had to calculate her bi-weekly paycheck based on her salary. And the way a double-sided journal works is on one side, they did the calculation, and on the other side, they had to explain their thinking. So we'll pass these around. That's just one example of, we've also done genres, most recently narrative writing. We did genres on persuasive writing. We had them sell compassion and write commercials selling all sorts of things. But this has been a really great way to get kids excited about writing and to teach a variety of genres across content areas. So I'll pass these around.
Writing has been a key focus in different aspects of our work at Glover, partly because we do see it as an area that we need to improve in the narrative piece for the long comp and also in response to literature. But in addition to that, the message that we keep talking about is that writing is thinking. And so when we engage students in any aspect of their education, if we're asking them to write it down, they're actively thinking, and they're actively engaged in the curriculum and the content. So one of the things that we started this year is instituting writers' notebooks in every classroom, K through five. So teachers have either selected a specific subject or have been writing across different content areas, but each day, students are expected to write in their writers' notebooks. And the idea is to push ourselves in sort of thinking about opportunities to provide writing in the classroom. It might be a simple, okay, we're thinking about this new concept in science class, I want you to come up with a, you know, 30-second brainstorm on everything you know. So it doesn't have to be a long composition, but it's actively getting students engaged and ensuring that they're thinking about the work that they're doing. And a push has been writing in math and explaining their thinking in math. Oftentimes, we see that students are rushing through the exercises that they're doing in math, and if they slow down and have to explain what they've done, they're going to find some of their mistakes. So we want them to own what they're doing, so not just do the computation, but be able to explain it and they understand it. So it has been a key focus. As I had spoken earlier, some of that is student work analysis. I will say that we utilize every minute of our faculty meetings. It is a limited amount of time that we get to work together as a group. So we, every faculty meeting is designated for some form of professional development. In addition to the work analysis sessions, we've also talked about effective feedback. So we've been looking at student work samples and talk specifically about what kind of feedback do we give kids to help them understand how to improve? So we've been doing some work on that. And then also talking about how we engage all learners when we're doing instruction. How, and writing is a piece of that and one tool to use, but how do we engage all learners when we're introducing a new concept? And so these are some of the topics that we've been covering in our faculty meetings and sort of working through as a group.
One of the best examples I can think of, of teachers really getting an opportunity to get new strategies and implement them was the all-day professional development that was on explicit writing instruction that we had. And teachers and administrators were given the opportunity to run those sessions. And I actually had the opportunity to run one of them myself, and we'll talk about that, I think, a little bit later. But some of those sessions were great. I ran one in particular on writing portfolios online, which we'll talk about a little bit more. There were also sessions on writing and math, writing in content areas, poetry. One common core exemplar we looked at that came out of those sessions, we used and implemented as a part of our fifth-grade writer's workshop activities in narrative writing. So it's those kind of opportunities that have really helped us implement some of these expanded opportunities for writing that we've been looking to achieve. As far as using technology to enhance instruction, one thing that we've done at Glover is made sure that there are projectors in all classrooms and smartboards in all classrooms. And the PTO has just been so instrumental in making that happen. They've had just targeted fundraising specifically to make sure that all classrooms have projectors and smartboards. Right now, and over the last two years, its focus fundraising has led to the PTO, I think last year, purchasing five projectors. And so now there's projectors in every room at the Glover Elementary School. And then this year, the PTO purchased four more smartboards and are looking to do another round of purchasing in order for smartboards to be installed in every single room at Glover Elementary School, which is incredible. And that's all due to both the PTO fundraising and, of course, the MFE also helping make that happen. The Study Island, the sort of online, standards-based math sort of curriculum support that we've subscribed to, the second graders had the opportunity this year to be a part of that. So Study Island is now in Glover and across Milton in the second grade and third and fourth and fifth grade. The online writing portfolios that I was talking about, one great use of Study Island, and I know, you know, mostly, I think a lot of teachers were using Study Island or had been using Study Island just for math, but there's a great writing component on there that enables students to, when they finish their work, it automatically puts all that work into an online writing portfolio. And teachers, parents, students can log in there. I think it's especially great for parents, they can log in and they can see all the writing their kids are doing. I know in my class, every single writing assignment, they do. They type on Study Island and get it in their writing portfolio so that their parents can see that. Parents can look that up, they can see all my comments on their writing, their grades. I just think it's a great way to, for me especially, it's a great way for me to keep their stuff organized, because my desk already has enough paper. And if I can limit any of that paper, having those online writing portfolios has just been great for me. And that training we did, I think that all-day PD session helped other teachers be exposed to that. And, you know, I'm hearing they're using that a little bit more, which is great. So utilizing those tools that we're giving to students and utilizing them the best way that we can as teachers has been great.
Not long ago, we were at a meeting, and a parent said, "Well, all this smartboard stuff is great, but how do you use it?" And I think sometimes as teachers, we've, you know, now it's become, they've become such integral parts of our lessons that we don't even realize that at the start of the school year, maybe we didn't even know how to use it. And I thought of an example, not long ago, one of the standards in the fifth-grade curriculums to teach measurement using protractors. And I remembered back to two years ago, before we had a smartboard, standing at the front of the room in a class of about 20 students with a protractor this big, saying, "You need to put the pencil there and line it up on the li-" and it's like, the kids are going, "What are you doing?" And they're trying to match it here. Well, with something like a smartboard, we have access through websites, well, through Smart Notebook itself, and then through websites like Everyday Math Online, to be able to pull up on the screen an interactive, three-foot-wide protractor. A protractor that you can draw angles with, that you can manipulate, that you can measure shapes with, so that it provides a visual that kids can not only see much more clearly and model on their own pages, but they can also stand up, go to the front of the classroom and move it themselves, and compare angles and things like that. And so it was just one example, when he had said, "You know, that's great, but how do you use it?" That was the first thing that came to my mind, was that there are so many things we can do with these smartboards that we couldn't do before we had them. Another thing we've done at Glover, thanks to an incredibly generous donation from a parent, at Glover, we recently received an iPad. And what we plan to do with the iPad is to push towards exposing some of our students with special needs in particular to assistive technology. We're in the works, meeting with Holly Concanon, the math and technology coordinator for the district, with special educators at the school, with the team chair at Glover, with Mrs. Nephew, with some of the one-to-one aides who work with some of our students with special needs. We're talking to Tucker and Cunningham and Callicott and other schools that are, you know, kind of have this desire to use this technology as well. And we're meeting and we're doing research on applications that will be effective tools to support and enhance our instruction in the classroom. So it's really in the pilot stages right now, but we're incredibly excited to see, you know, where this may take us as well. So we have a number of Glover representatives on the anti-bullying committee in Milton. Over the summer, we had a few Glover teachers who worked on developing an anti-bullying curriculum. And what this anti-bullying curriculum does is it takes a proactive and community-building approach to prevention of bullying. And this curriculum is centered around these four core values, compassion, respect, honesty, and responsibility. So once a term, across every grade level, French and English at the Glover School, we are teaching lessons centered on these core values. What's on the board behind me right now are two fifth-grade bulletin boards that came out of these compassion lessons. Now, in the fifth grade, we took it a step farther in the writer's workshop and had them, as I said, write compassion commercials, in which our fifth graders sold, we got flip cameras in the fifth grade, so we wrote, produced, videotaped commercials selling this idea of compassion. And what was really great is to walk down the halls of Glover and see compassion bulletin boards in French, compassion bulletin boards at the kindergarten level all the way up to the fifth grade level. It's been a really community-building experience for us at the Glover School. It's fostered really positive dialogue and has been really wonderful.
I think one of the important elements to education is, the curriculum is important, assessment is important, instruction is important, but if kids don't feel accepted and welcome and safe, they won't learn. So although you have to think about all those things, you also have to think about how you create a culture where kids really want to be in school and feel accepted. So the bullying piece is an incredibly important, anti-bullying curriculum is an incredibly important piece to that. And our diversity committee has also done some nice work around thinking about how we create that culture. One of the projects that we've been doing, we started last year and have developed further this year, is the Glover Goes Global Project. A while back, there was a grant written to purchase mural maps. The map is probably about 14 feet wide and goes all the way to the ceiling. And it is a world map that is right at the entrance of our school. And we ask students to go home and talk to their families about their heritage, and then bring that back and share that with us. And so what you see here on the slide is, and you can't really see the numbers, but all those little squares are countries and numbers that represent the amount of students that come from that country. So I think we had over 100 countries represented at our school, and it sort of models that we are a diverse community and we're proud of it. And the students this year were in charge of bringing, each class got a handful of countries that they were in charge of coming to the map and putting onto the map so that they could be part of the creation of the data. We also have groups of classrooms using some of the data as part of their instruction. Great way to do some math instruction is looking at some of this data that's real and it's about us. We've also spurred some conversation around, in the sheet that we asked students to go home and fill out, we got parents to fill out information if they were interested in participating in some of our diversity committee events. So we got a, out of that, we got an email list of parents that were interested in participating in the things that we're doing around diversity. In addition to that, last year, we did a One Book, One School initiative, and we are doing that again this year. We have written a grant and hopefully will receive funds to purchase books for every classroom. The book is called Everyone Cooks With Rice. And it is a picture book that sort of models a neighborhood, a sibling is looking for the older brother and is going from neighbor to neighbor, and it's dinnertime. And is always, is able to sample food from every house, looking for the older brother and can't find him, but has got to sample all this lovely dishes. And the theme of the story is that everybody cooks with rice, regardless of the nationality or where someone's from, and there's that connection. And so we are taking that book, and we're going to be doing an evening event after the students read the book in their classrooms and do some writing activities with it. The author will hopefully be joining us in an evening to share the message with our children. And we will also be doing what we're calling a game night, where students, we have selected Manakela as the game, we'll be doing a tournament. So again, another thing that all groups of people, all families, enjoy games and enjoy interacting and enjoy having that social time. And so we'll be coupling that, having the author come, as well as have a tournament of games to have our families come together. Again, thinking about that importance of making sure everyone feels accepted, everyone feels welcome and safe to be in a learning environment where they can thrive. I will say that, you know, in my year and a half of being at Glover, the one thing I can say is that the parents are unbelievable. We have an incredibly supportive parent population, and it really starts with the PTO. Last year, one of the things that we started and have continued to do this year is really work with the PTO around the initiatives that we're focusing on. And we've done that through what we call sort of feedback and surveys. Every time there's an initiative that the PTO works on or supports, an assembly that comes into the school, I take a poll from the staff and find out how they liked it. And I give that feedback back to the PTO. And through that, last year, we were really able to fine-tune some of the things that were happening. Sometimes things evolve and they just happen because they happened for the years, for years and years, and you have to always reflect on, are they the best things? And so I feel like in the course of the last year, we've really fine-tuned some of the work that the PTO has done and really focused it in a way that's going to support the goals of the school. And that was really clear in the technology. As we spoke to the PTO about what our goals are as a school, it was clear that they could partner with us and help us with this need to ensure that all kids have access to equal technology, that not just one classroom has a smartboard, or one classroom has a projector, that all classrooms have that access. And they have been on a mission to raise money for us, and it's been an unbelievably positive effort. And we do believe that by the end of this school year, all classrooms at Glover will have projectors and smartboards, and that is very much part of the PTO's work. Some of the other things that we've really focused on are these curriculum nights. We've done both a literacy night and a family math night, to really be able to share with families some of the goals that we have at Glover and how they can support those goals. So last year, we had a family math night that really focused on teaching parents about the everyday math program, which was a nice idea, but it was only for parents, and we had about 20 people come. So not, in my book, a success. So we had to rethink that. And this year, I said, "If we're going to get a lot of people to come, we need to invite the kids." So we shifted our focus and we created a family math night where parents and guardians and their children got to engage in math activities. And the idea was to help parents with easy ways to support the math instruction at home. So the theme was math games, math games that they could easily replicate at home. So we had math centers for every grade level. We started with Math Jeopardy, where close to 300 people came to participate. So again, shifting the focus, rethinking how we were going to implement the program, and really saw some great success. And it was fabulous to walk around Glover Elementary School and watch a group of fourth grade moms really focusing on this math game and getting a little competitive. grade moms really focusing on this math game and getting a little competitive, but enjoying every minute of it. So, it was a huge success, and I hope that those games have now started in the homes. That's the goal. In addition to that, we have expanded the Meet the Artist program, where parents are coming to do art history in the classrooms. We've expanded it to the 3rd grade. I think the added benefit, not just having students exposed to wonderful art history programs, it's allowing for small class. They take half of the class when they do their instruction. The other half gets to stay with the teacher. Teacher has an opportunity to do some small group work. So, it's... This is all parent-run and very successful. Last year, we spoke about JA in a Day, which again, will be something that we do this year. It's junior achievement, really talking to the students about business and economics, how it relates to them. And it is all run by parents. Last year, we had 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade parents in every class. Mr. Phelan was one of our presenters, did an excellent job. And finally, really focusing on the newsletter. We have a newsletter that goes out every three weeks as a form of communication. And one of the things that we've... I've tried this year to really focus on is take an opportunity for students to be participants in writing articles for the newsletter, so their voice can be heard as we share some of the things that are coming out at Glover. Okay. This is our final slide in talking about collaborative relationships. One of my favorite projects that started this year is what we call my Slack Team, the Student Leadership Advisory Council. It is a group of eight students, 5th grade students, that have come and meet with me during their lunch and recess time. And we work on projects throughout the school. They give me feedback on how to improve, and they're very willing to give me lots of feedback. And one of our most recent projects that we worked on was the Great Reading Race. We did a three-week session where students logged their independent reading. We documented all of their minutes and put them on charts, so each classroom had a part of the graph. And so my Slack team members were busy calculating minutes from all these reading logs. We had to always be careful because we were having so much fun with all the numbers that we would sometimes miss lunch and recess, and we'd be into instruction time. So, we were... But we were enjoying every minute, and they were doing their math and calculating the minutes. And the students really enjoyed watching the charts and watching the race evolve in the three weeks, and it got kids really excited about their reading and really showcased their independent reading at home. The next project that we're on to, that will start right after break, is preparing for the Study Island for a Cause, which we did last year. We basically, for a week's time, we log our Study Island correct answers. Students find sponsors to support their effort. They might do a penny a question, so any... You know, they get... There are 20 questions correct, they get 20 pennies. Last year, we raised money for Schools on Wheels, an organization that provides backpacks for students that are homeless in Massachusetts. So, my leadership team will learn about the organization. They will present to the 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade classes. They will educate them about the organization. They will collect all the data sheets. They will calculate the money. They will stuff the backpacks, as they did last year. And I will say that last year, they blew me away because we had a goal. The kids said, "You really need to have a goal for this kind of stuff." So, they said, "Let's share with the students. We want to try and reach 30,000 questions correct in one week's time." So, I said, "That's a great goal." And they didn't know that I could kind of keep track as the week went on. They reached that within four days. And seven days later, they were at 50,000 correct questions logged in one week's time. So, the kids, when they own it and it's theirs, they respond.
Another thing we've done at Glover, not just collaborating with the students, but collaborating among the staff that started this year, is special education team collaborative meetings. And at these meetings, we meet once a month with the team chair at Glover, with the co-taught teams, with service providers, the occupational therapist, speech therapist. And we really talk about... We use it almost like a critical friends group, where we talk about special education law and how that's impacting our instruction, how it's impacting our paperwork. We talk about certain situations or students. We really look for support in one another. We share ideas, we provide feedback. It's just another example at Glover of taking time to work with our colleagues and really collaborate and make sure what we're doing is as effective as possible.
And finally, I mean, it might seem like a little thing, but there's just a shared folder at Glover. So, I mean, we can open up our computers and open up our file managers and click on Shared Folder if I was looking for something in particular on, you know, narrative writing or on geometry. I can look in, you know, Grade 5 Math, and I can look and see what some of my colleagues have put on there. And so, you know, I'm saving time prepping, so that I can move on to something else. And it's just a great way to share resources and not, you know, sort of double up our work and double up our efforts and share and collaborate. So, that's been great. I mean, that's been a great resource and kind of an easy, simple thing, although I'm not the one who set it up. So, maybe it wasn't so easy and simple. I don't know.
That's where you can find all those unit assessments and things like that.
Yeah, that's great.
Curriculum teams are working on, among a lot of other things.
So, I can say overall, we've... It's been a great start to our school year. What makes Glover special, at least what I see, is a phenomenal staff that really do collaborate and work well together and are always willing to try new things. And anytime that I'm presenting a new thing in faculty meetings or a new topic, people are open and willing to share their thoughts and ideas. And so the collaboration that takes place at Glover, I think, is a key to success, and what I see will continue to move our school forward. It's something that I'm very proud of.
Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? I believe you've had one before.
I did.
Cut you off.
That's okay. I was just going to ask a little question after five I page. I'm sorry. When you were talking about the flexible grouping for the... Maybe was it writing for math?
For math.
For math. So, you said it was... Was that just one day a week? Or is it...
One... It's one day a week for 45 minutes, a 45-minute block.
So, for some kids, it's interventions, and for some students, it's also...
Enrichment, absolutely.
Okay. And then my other question is... Well, first of all, let me take a step back and say that was a wonderful presentation. I thoroughly enjoyed it. You talked about the respect for human differences and the anti-bullying curriculum. So, having those core values, that's a new thing, a new initiative for you all this year. Are you still doing Second Step? Or is this...
Yes.
Okay. So, it's just...
It's an addition.
...in addition to it. Great. So many great ideas. I mean, you know I'm taking notes the whole time.
Thank you.
Just two questions and a comment, and just to follow up on the bullying thing. So, it's Second Step plus those four standards, or there's another curriculum? Because I heard you say curriculum.
Second Step, as well as these four core values. Within this, a group of administrators and teachers developed lessons that link to these four core standards. So, and all of that is accessible to our teachers. So, they're making sure to introduce the topics throughout the timeframe that we're focusing on it. We've definitely also focused on making sure that the work is visual to send a message to the bulletin boards, but it becomes sort of a theme for that course of time.
And is that shared with the other elementary schools?
Yes. The... This is Alan Cron's anti-bullying program that he put in place. It's the VPAC Committee that's district-wide. And actually, on the web, the curriculum is split into the four quarters of the year. And you can go on, as a parent or a community member, and actually see what the curriculum is and what the lessons are.
Yeah. Want to make sure it's all connected.
Yeah.
And then if I can keep going, just one more question. Or what really stood out for me was the using the data on the individual kids. I mean, everybody says to drive instruction, but you actually made binders with the individual kids, and I think that that's such a great way to use the data and for teachers to really see it. The other thing that stood out was how you're integrating the kids with individual education plans, and you were saying you get some cross-sections there. And I always say this, and Mary's probably sick of me saying this, but when my girl was in Grade 4 at Colicott, they took Kelly Hannan and put her in Mary Fiorenza's room. So, they had a full-time special ed teacher and a full-time regular ed teacher, and they took all the kids on IEPs and put them in that class. It was truly inclusion. They did Shakespeare that year. It was unbelievable. But, you know, that's two full-time teachers. So, how did you... It sounds like you're trying to do the same thing, where it's good for the kids with special needs.
Sure.
But you also want to give it back to the kids on regular learning needs, that it sounds like you're trying to do. So, how are you doing that?
So, the... I can give an example. In the co-taught model, our 4th grade, as well as our 5th grade, special educators stay in the classroom for half the day, the second half of the day. They typically are servicing students in a pull-out fashion. And so, we looked at the students that were receiving pull-out, and for many cases, said, "Well, let's push in." So, our teachers that may have been the co-taught teacher in the 4th grade in the morning and in the afternoon did pull-out, she now may push into one of the other 4th grade classes and do writing instruction or reading instruction within that class. So, we're now having our special educators do that with a variety of different classes.
Just ask you a question on that.
Sure.
But are they... They have to service the children that have a plan?
Absolutely.
So, how do they see the other kids if they're servicing the kids on the plans?
It was a lot of creative looking at all the schedules and trying to make it work. And we were able to do that by... And pushing in for most situations where there might have been two students in a classroom that needed reading services. We were able to push in two times a week to accommodate those plans, and were able to provide the service in the classroom directly linked to the curriculum, so that it's more effective. And what we have seen as a positive result, clearly still, we're also looking at the data, but kids are happy. They don't want to leave their classroom. And so, they... And we're also seeing special educators collaborate with additional teachers, which is also an added benefit.
Great. Thank you.
That's your question.
Well, first of all, I thought this was a very interesting presentation. I thought it was the most interesting of everybody that came in here. I especially like the end-of-term awards versus the end-of-the-year awards. I think children should be rewarded as they're going along versus waiting till the end of the year. It keeps them interested. And I did like the math problems, where you did a math problem and you explain it. The question is, and also your collaboration with your colleagues and your teachers and the parents in the Glover. If something is working, such as the math problem, do you collaborate with principals and teachers in other schools and say, "You know, this is working in our school. Do you want to try it in your school?"
Sure. I can say that every Wednesday morning, I meet with Dr. Spalding, and we do exactly that. So, there definitely are mechanisms to ensure that we're collaborating. We do that through our grade-level facilitators meetings. So, Kristin Smith is one of our grade-level facilitators. She meets with 5th grade teachers across all other schools, and they do share those kinds of strategies. We also have opportunities to share those strategies in principal and coordinator meetings. So, you know, multiple times throughout the year, as we're meeting, we can kind of share those things. What also helps is having, you know, the coordinators, Holly Kincanon, Martha Sherman, who come into all of our buildings, and they see different initiatives happening. And then, as they go into another building, they are also sharing what's working and what they're seeing in other schools. So, there's... I think there's a number of different vehicles to allow that collaboration.
I think that's... I'm delighted to hear that, because for a minute, I was thinking that this is a Glover School education versus a Milton Public School education. And if you're collaborating, I feel good about that.
If I may address, Mr. Cohen brought up something that's very important to me, because we are a school system, and we have individual students, teachers, talented teachers, talented principals. But our goal is to be sure that all of the children across the district are offered the best programs possible. And I think the Glover presentation tonight just demonstrates that if you keep re-examining and examining yourselves and your practices, and to Ms. Nefew's point, when she said she shares with Dr. Spalding, they meet at, I think, 6:30 or 7:00 in East Milton Square before they go to school, and they share their ideas. But there are vehicles with the grade-level facilitators is a huge opportunity. The coordinators and the principals meet, we meet as a leadership team. So, I think everyone appreciates that. I never want there to be a program at the Colicott that the Glover children don't benefit from. And again, they can look differently at the four... I call them continents, six different continents we have. And in the hands of the teachers and the principals, but we want all of our children, all of our students, to be offered all of these programs. So, the point that you brought up, Mr. Cohen, is one of our priorities.
It just sounds like wonderful, wonderful things are happening at Glover. And it doesn't cease to amaze me how rich what we offer at our schools is. And the more opportunities that you have to describe to not only us, but parents, exactly the things that you've described here, I just think it just helps everyone understand what goes on every single day in our schools. And, you know, when I compare it, again, I'm going to date myself. When I was in school, it was very rigid. It was, you opened your book, everyone read at the same time. That... I mean, we have come so far in an educational perspective to try and meet all the needs of all kids, and in all the different subjects that we're, you know, required to do. And it just... It never ceases to amaze me what great things go on at school. So, congratulations.
Couple of questions. The increase in special education is quite astounding that you have on your chart here, where you increased by 19 and 16. Is there something that you can point to, or a combination of things you can point to that would sort of account for that? Or, you know, really, is it a combination of things that just have evolved? I mean, is there something that, in your analysis, you've been able to point out?
I don't think I could point to one specific thing. I think it is a variety of different things. I think the co-taught model is exceptional. I think the teachers that are doing the co-taught are exceptional. I think they are very skilled at using data to drive instruction, and they're doing that well. And they are a group of teachers that are never stagnant in terms of their thoughts around instruction. They're constantly thinking about how to improve, so they're only getting better. I think that, you know, one of the things that we saw last year, the 4th grade teachers looped with students to the 5th grade. That could be something that impacted our data. I think utilizing Study Island as a tool for additional practice is absolutely something that has impacted data. I think just in general, the ability to have common assessments in math in the last couple of years, and then using those common assessments to drive instruction, has impacted student achievement. And obviously, when students might have specific individual needs, all that data is so important. So, those are a handful of things that I could... That I think could definitely have had an impact. We have one of our fabulous special educators here, so maybe she has additional thoughts. But I think that those are sort of some of the pieces that have definitely impacted student achievement.
Ms. Kelly, may I interrupt you for a minute? For the school committee and the viewing public, Ms. Nefew, will you describe looping?
Oh, so, Kristin Smith and Sarah Willis, the co-teachers in the 4th grade, two years ago, they then looped with the students, which means they went with the students to the 5th grade. So, the benefit of that is, in September, knowing exactly who their students are, what their needs are, and... needs are, and the students know very well their teachers and what their expectations are. So clearly that, that can be a benefit. And that was an experience that took place last year.
Thank you.
Mary?
I just wanted to ask you a question about that. So is that the Glover school decision to loop or?
Individual, over the years, we've had individual principals and teachers decide for a particular group of students to loop.
Right. My mother was a looper in Boston Public Schools for many years, but she was one of the few. And I just wondered if that, to Dennis's point, is that something other schools think about?
Yes.
Do we have the data that shows that's effective? And I think that's a lot to ask a teacher to go from fourth to fifth and fifth to fourth. It's a lot.
Yeah.
But what's the research about it? What does it say?
I mean, I think there's, you can look at the strengths and weaknesses to both cases. When you loop, you need to now begin to understand a new curriculum. So, you know, you can be an expert in fourth grade, understand the standards, understand the students and know where they need to go. And then you go to fifth grade and you have a whole new group of things to learn. So that's a downfall of looping. But of course, when you're working with a very, a unique group of students and you need to understand their needs and you get to follow them, that's a benefit. So you kind of have to outweigh that and decide. It is not something that we do often, at least from what I've seen, but I think that that could have had an impact in last year's case.
Thank you.
Mary?
And then just one other, and this really goes to more than just Glover School, but it seems that we always have areas for improvement. And I often wonder, are these the same areas that were there last year or the year before? And so I think just as a system, perhaps we should start tracking from a long-term perspective. What are the areas that basically pop up as in need of improvement?
And I will say that when, when I look at areas for improvement, I do look at a three-year trend because, you know, you can say, "Oh, poetry popped." Well, it's three questions possibly this year. So you really have to see it over the course of a number of years to say, "Oh, this is something we have to look at the curriculum. We have to look at the instruction." So it is important to look at those, look at it as a trend as opposed to a last year situation. Good to look at the questions and look and see what the kids got caught up on if they did struggle in poetry. But if that was only for one year, it could have been the specific test. It could have been a variety of things.
Thanks.
Mr. Walker, you ready?
Well, this is just a pretty exciting success story, I'd say. And it's, for me, it's validation. I had the chance to visit the Glover and you can actually feel the excitement that students feel about what they're learning. So it comes as no surprise, but it is quite impressive. And once again, it seems like you're a team, that you've got leadership and the teachers are collaborating. And I've had the opportunity to actually meet the Glover PTO and what an impressive group. And I love the idea of using data to drive instruction that, and it seems like you really have very, very clear pictures of what each student's strengths and development challenges are. And that has to be where it all starts. So it's, it's an impressive story. I hope any, any parent listening would have to be reassured that very, very good things are going on in the Glover School. So, good work. I've got just a couple of detailed questions that, I love the idea about action plans and that's something I've been asking about if you've listened to some of the other meetings we've had on these kinds of presentations. So what, if you have a student, have Leroy Walker, he's really a likable student but has some challenges in making inferences and geometry on the math side. How does, how does that particular action plan get developed? What does that look like?
I think it's different in the different subject areas for sure. A lot of times, we use, I know in Mr. East's class and in my class and across Glover School, we use with the Reader's Workshop model. Well, the benefit to the Reader's Workshop model, and especially when dealing with a student who says, say, has a weakness in making inferences, is that it's a model in that the teacher leads a lesson and models how to make an inference as a good reader. And then what we do is we allow kids to turn and talk to each other and make inferences to one another. And then what we do is we send you back to your seats and in your independent reading book at your own personal level, whatever that level may be, we have you practicing. And during that time when you're practicing as a teacher, it's our job to meet with you, to meet with those kids, the kids who maybe are struggling to make inferences. And in conferencing with you, it's one-to-one instruction where we can try to figure out, you know, if, if you didn't get it with the student who you were working with and you were discussing with and collaborating with, then we'll try to do it as one-on-one with the student. And then we come back to the whole class and we have, we provide kids an opportunity to share their inferences and how they made them and the strategies that they used to come up with these inferences. In a model like that, it's really, you're getting almost everything, including the kitchen sink thrown at you in terms of strategy. That's one type of reading instruction that we commonly use. And working with inferences is something that will be done over a unit of study. It'll be done over a course of weeks and then we'll continuously loop and spiral back to it to make sure that you're continuing to apply the strategy. Or if you, if you weren't quite there in mastery before, we'll push you next time we see it.
One thing I do for students who are struggling in math, the use of Study Island has made it really easy to see where students are struggling. I could within, you know, a minute right now, pull up a report on a student and, and pull up an area that needs improvement report on any student in my class. And it would show me what they've done in each of these topics, where they need to improve. It would be areas that need, that need improvement medium priority, areas that need improvement high priority, areas where the student has met the standard. And I could, you know, I could pull that up in a minute on any one of my students. So those reports are great for me because then I can give those individual students their own assignment, a practice and instruction assignment, just in that, whatever topic that, that they're struggling in. I can talk to that student about that. I can have them do some extra reading on that topic. So identifying the problems, Study Island is one way that's made that easier. And easier to also give them what they need, yeah.
Just another example of sort of what we do. Two faculty meetings ago, I had the staff meet in small groups and I gave them a list of all of their students and then gave them, basically, it was a data table that said, "How are they doing?" And we did sort of that model of, is it a thumbs up or is it a thumbs down in math and English and writing, in sort of emotional stuff, social stuff? How's homework going? And they literally sort of went through and checked how those things, you know, take the moment to sort of reflect on all those different aspects of their schooling. And then the second part of it, what are the interventions? What are the strategies? What are the things that we've done to support those areas? And the opportunity was to meet in a small group and say, you know, "I think Kristin and Chase, I think they actually did meet together." And, you know, they might profile a student and say, you know, "He's really struggling in writing." "Oh, well, have you tried this? This has worked with some of my children." "Have you talked to the parents? Has there been a conversation?" And I will say through that meeting, we actually, there was a student that sort of popped and saying, "We need to look a little further. We need to find some more supports for this student." And it was through those conversations and saying, "These are the things we're doing, but now that we reflect, that's not enough." And so that might involve having a family come in and to talk about some of the additional things that we might be able to provide. Whether it be for one child, it was additional supports for organization, pulling someone aside and saying, "We need to get some binder organization set up and a structure for that." Or, you know, "We're starting some before and after-school math support and providing that opportunity for kids." So looking at, or maybe it's a meeting with the adjustment counselor because we have some, some social issues that are happening. So being able to collaborate and talk about what it is that's working in other classes, what kinds of things we can be doing, and going through that entire list and having a moment to reflect, how is each and every child doing right now?
That's very impressive. My last question is, do you think maybe I could stop by next week and do one of those my life as an adult projects? I think I'd have a lot to say.
I will say they were not thrilled with all the taxes and the health insurance.
Well, the highest paid one was the major league soccer player, $900,000 a year.
I actually had a student make a comment. "That's why my dad gets so upset during tax season."
Right.
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to say, I found the books of the students to be fascinating, that you have the ability to put all that together for every student. One thing you didn't say explicitly, but I inferred, was you talked about the common assessments and getting together and looking at samples and so forth. I assume you have a common rubric of some sort that you work from for a lot of these assessments? And if so, is that something that's available toward, to parents?
The, the common assessments that have currently been developed are specifically in math. They have unit assessments for every unit and across every grade. And we are currently in the process of working on English Language Arts assessments. So we, in terms of a rubric, there isn't a rubric for the math because it's more problem by problem. But the, in terms of like a writing assignment, for example, in their Writer's Workshop, one of the next units is on some open response writing, in which case they would absolutely have a rubric that they would share with families.
Actually, the rubrics we use when it comes to open response are available through the Department of Education website. We really try hard to, when it comes to open responses in particular, take a look at what the Department of Education deems a four, three, two, one on the rubric. And we use that and we show the kids that and we show models of work that was a four versus a one and so on and so forth. But that's all online.
And the, the open responses that are used in the math assessments, meaning the longer-form word problems, those, those do have rubrics on those common assessments. So that piece of it, yeah, they do have rubrics, the open response piece.
I too want to thanks Principal Nephew and the Site Council, all of the teachers and staff at the Glover School. And yesterday morning, Ms. Smith and Ms. Nephew reported out to Citizens of Diverse Milton. And we briefly spoke with Ms. Nephew, but we didn't get to see Ms. Smith. And the response from Citizens of Diverse Milton on your work in your diversity subcommittee was just as positive as the school committee's response tonight. And so what it should say, as Mr. Walker said, to every parent and school committee member and resident, every hour of every day, what's going on in their public schools. And as the superintendent, I want to thank each of you. And you really symbolize the best. And all of the teachers at the Glover, Ms. Nephew recognizing the PTO, the Glovers, the Glover students, and yourself, Ms. Nephew. As the principal, I want to congratulate you and thank you.
Thank you.
And our TV star as well, Ms. Smith.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Why don't you share that story in case somebody doesn't know?
Oh, okay. So not long ago, I, actually a Glover parent suggested I submit a video to be on Wheel of Fortune. And I submitted a video not thinking in a million years I would ever be picked. And then I got a phone call. And they said, "In two weeks, you're flying out to California to film Wheel of Fortune." And I did. And it was incredibly scary, but I did very well. I won a honeymoon, some going on a honeymoon and some money to help pay for my loans. But it was a really great experience. And it was actually funny because it was my fifth graders who gave me like the most advice. I mean, their advice is like, "Don't trip. Don't embarrass us." Hopefully I didn't.
Ms. Nephew, tell, because Ms. Smith is so modest. Will you tell the story about the highlight of the presentation?
Well, I will say that, of course, the Glover staff was very excited for Ms. Smith. And so we had established a showing party where all the staff would join, would come together to watch the show. And close to the time that it was showing, Ms. Smith informed us that the, that they wanted TV crews to come do a, you know, to film us watching it because something happened on the show that had only happened once or twice. And of course, she couldn't share this with us at the time because it was all a big secret. But what happened that has only happened once or twice is that in one of the rounds, she had one T on the board on the puzzle and she guessed coffee table book and it was correct. So with one letter, was able to guess the puzzle, which apparently doesn't happen very often.
What are my many hidden talents?
To all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to, Mr. Phelan's going to give us a very informative update on our school start time subcommittee. Mr. Phelan?
The document you have in front of you is a draft document of the executive summary that was written by the start time committee that was a charge from the school committee to the superintendent. This is a draft document. We were very fortunate to be able to get together five times to review data, to look at research articles, to bring a group of people through a process whereby they were to advise the superintendent if in fact the school system thought about changing the start times of schools. And I'm not saying that we are at that point, at this point, but that was the task. What information in research should we pay attention to? The document you see as in draft form has an introduction, the background of why we decided to get together, the problem that we were asked to solve, the committee members that participated, and then it goes deeply into the process that we had that you can read through. We reviewed a significant amount of literature that's cited in the, in the summary. We reviewed and analyzed documents of surrounding towns and start times. And then the last thing we did was provide a survey to all of our parents, teachers and students just over the last two days. We had over 1,000 survey participants. And the documents that we reviewed and the survey questions that we analyzed have all been provided and summarized in this document. Our hope is that you read through this document. If you have any edits or questions, please let me know. It is being revised and edited by one of our committee members who happens to do that work for a living, Lisa White. We appreciate her time and effort to do so. And when we have a final draft, we will present it to the committee once more and then put it up on the web for our parents and our community to review. So this document is for you to review. And if you have any questions, please get back to me. And as we prepare the final drafts, we will also submit that for your approval and to the superintendent as well.
Thank you.
I just want, I want to recognize Mr. Phelan and everyone who's in the office has awed at the work of this committee. Marsha Yuretsky, Alan Cron, Lisa White, Mary Shapiro, Peter McLaughlin, Kathy Quealy, Kristin Smith and David Mills. This committee, under Assistant Superintendent Phelan's leadership, has done a tremendous amount of work reviewing the research. We have a Milton resident who is a doctoral student on this topic. And the group has done a phenomenal job, as you will see evidenced in this report. And then we'll take your input during the next weeks. And at our next school committee meeting, Mr. Phelan and the committee will report out to really educate you and the community on this very timely topic that you'll see in school research and issues that schools are dealing with really across the country. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Phelan on this report?
Briefly, just following up. In this library every day this week, it's alive with the parents of kindergarten students. This week is kindergarten registration. And if in the viewing audience, any parent guardian is watching and has a child who's going to enter our kindergarten next week, I would encourage them to call Sean Walsh at 617-696-5040, extension 4811, or just ring the superintendent's office and we'll be able to get you an appointment. That's very important for the parents this week to come in, not with their children, but the parents to sit down and their appointments about, for full-day kindergarten, they sit down and they go over the tuition payments and the personal information to establish whether the parents establish whether the parents or guardians are able to use the sliding scale. They spend a tremendous amount of time with the school nurses, the school secretary. So again, this is a very important week if you have a kindergartner entering the Milton Public Schools next year. We've put in your green packets tonight. We had a very, very successful first grade, well, in the individual schools, the first grade information night. Every principal, I wish Ms. Nephew was still here, reported in to Mr. Phelan and me the next morning, very positive feedback having those first grade information nights. Mr. Phelan led that initiative with the principals and Sean Walsh, so that the presentation of put in your green folders answers every single question that you could possibly have and gives an outstanding picture of what first grade is in the Milton Public Schools. We also had a successful last week, Milton High School Program of Studies Night. Dr. Arangio and the high school team really reached out to eighth-grade parents. Dr. Arangio went to the PS Middle School and led a presentation for parents. And then I think that was so successful that the evening at the high school, for high school parents, we had a huge representation from eighth-grade parents interested in the program of studies. I'm going to turn the next item over. We all had to spend the day with the warrant committee that we reported on later, but the walkathon. Milton High School's annual walkathon exceeded expectations, and every single person who's reported out, who was there on Saturday, gives it an A-plus. We have students here, but I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Bagley Jones, who led the charge with Laura Kessler to talk about, and as Dr. Arangio said to me, "Do you realize that in one day, this group may earn $30,000?"
Tell me.
And so I'm going to turn it over to you about how that happened, Ms. Bagley Jones.
I was smiling, because I was thinking, hmm, warrant committee all day, walkathon all day. So I think I probably got the better deal. Renee Taber, Taber, is her name, or Maureen Griffin, new co-chairs that joined Laura and I for the fourth annual walkathon. And just a couple of highlights, because we'll have a couple of kids come back when we have the final amount in, and thank some of our business and community members. There's almost 400 kids there, the three here that were there, right? Largest crowd we've had ever. I think it was like 376 to be exact, but it's the loudest, largest group we've ever had. I want to say close to 50 staff, but Steve Tracer took my sign-in sheet, so I don't know the exact number, but it was a lot. A lot of parents, as usual, we always know our parents will show up, but a lot of people showed up. The signs behind you give you a sense of some of the thanks that the kids had, that Ms. Hughes organized for us. The community gave a ton of donations, a lot of pledges, a lot of money collected. And by the way, we are still taking pledges, we are still accepting money. We just put out another letter to a couple of businesses we forgot to ask, a couple of parents, a couple of kids. We're still taking money, because we'd like to be over our budget that we expected. So we're almost over it. I can't, before I say the final amount, I can't thank Laura Kessler enough, who has just been an incredible person doing this walkathon for four years. She's the organization, the brains behind it. And her daughter Katie Kraus, I'm going to give another shout-out to, you know Katie, captain of the volleyball team, captain of the basketball team, going to school to be a nurse, going to school to play basketball, one of the best kids around. And Laura thinks just because Katie's graduating, she doesn't have to do the walk anymore. But I don't think that that's true. I think Laura has to come back and do it. Can we make that a school committee policy, maybe? And Laura has just been great as the two new parents who have stepped up to the plate to help this. And before I tell you the final amount, I do just want to go on record as saying, "I did not cheat at dodgeball. The rules changed since I played the game. The kids kept telling me I was out, but I didn't get hit. But I didn't know the rules, because nobody told me the rules. And I wondered why it was only the gym teacher and I left at the end. I'm like, this is weird." But anyway, so I'm on record, I did not cheat. So the final amount of money, which is still not final, final, final. Matt, you want to give us the final amount?
I gave you the paper, actually.
I know, but, well, and we'll tell you next time who gave, you know, what community members gave in the schools that gave to, not by amount, but we'll tell them that. But the final amount collected that Matt has figured out is?
So far, $29,043, but we know that some money is still to come in, and we don't know how much. If there are any students at home that have their collections that they forgot to bring in on Saturday, we'd appreciate it if you bring them in this week.
We had, yeah, it was really great. And I was projecting a dismal failure, so I was wrong. But Brian Board, who was our biggest cheerleader, one of the biggest cheerleaders, donated six Celtics tickets, I think?
Yes.
Two, four, six. And luckily, somebody outbid me, so I don't have to come up with 200 bucks for mine, because I was going to buy two. But so we're...
You got the bidding going, I heard.
I did, that's why, I got the bidding going. My kids will be disappointed. But it was truly remarkable, you can't stress enough, the school department and the administration of the school letting us come in and do all that we did and make way for us in the school day, which is really appreciated. So thank you. I missed you all.
I just want to tell you, we had a taskmaster of a director on that walkathon, and you don't raise those kind of funds in one day. But Ms. Bagley Jones led us, and your children were actively involved. But I think that we have to step away and say that the students of Milton High School stepped up.
Yeah.
And so the businesses gave some money, but really, 99% of those funds were brought in by Milton High School students when they heard that they were being asked for clubs and activities and athletics to step up. And again, your peers should be complimented in the number of students. And I met one student at one of Ms. Bagley Jones's meetings who said to me, "Well, I'm going to do these posters, but I have to work that day." And so to think that you had 400 to 500 students there, and the number of students who participated but couldn't be there that day, I think it spoke to what I refer to as perfect, perfect children, perfect students, perfect young adults at Milton High School. And so that's the sign of a school that's sound, a school that has a high morale. And people tell me they saw teachers that, always you have teachers who come out to events, you had some response from your teachers and their families on Saturday. So you ought to be complimented.
Thanks, Mary.
The chair. I just want to add that I, Ms. Bagley Jones has been terribly modest, but I know for a fact that you are a driving force on this, and you won't give yourself credit, but you deserve quite a bit of credit for this.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Going on, I want to remind, unless the three students at the end have forgotten, next week is school vacation. And we're on to plans for the MFE celebration, the big beach ball on March 10. And here's a little secret, that if you haven't gone online yet, if you order your tickets by, I believe it's the 17th, the tickets are at a reduced fee. I think of $60 a ticket, and you can order and go with a group of 10 people. These 10 people will all be sitting together, but you can all sit together at a table. You might not want to sit at a table, but I would urge you to get that discounted ticket. And here's another little secret. Last year, at over 700, it sold out. I witnessed, to my chagrin, people being turned away. And so get your tickets early to the viewing public, because they know they are going to sell out. You're distressed about that, Mr. Cohane, you have to work quick. I think you've already taken care of your tickets. And so that's, again, March 10, the MFE celebration. And they are on their way, and it should be a fun night for everyone, and a different format. Again, reminder, the Faculty Talent Show, March 29th and 30th, Milton is hosting, very exciting, the Best Buddies statewide prom in our fieldhouse on March 31st. March is coming up, March is Arts in Our Schools Month. And you heard from the Glover, our MCAS testing is beginning, and I would urge all parents, as all guardians, all our principals, and I will be urging parents and guardians to go on the web to check those dates. And teachers will be communicating with the parents and guardians of our students so that they know the exact dates of the MCAS testing. Thank you, Jim and Pavlicek.
All right. Anything for Ms. Gormley.
On your green folders.
My report, I just want to thank our student members again for coming. We have excellent attendance from this year's crop of student members, Stephen, Darian, and Katie. So thank you very much for being here. Our principal item in the interim since our last meeting has, of course, been, other than the walkathon, the warrant committee all-day meeting, but rather than speaking about it here, I think we'll defer to the finance subcommittee meeting. And we'll put it right on your agenda there, Ms. Cal.
You know, Chairman Pavlicek, I think you should describe the event that it was. Because I, it really, it was a long day, but it was well worth being there, hearing the discussions, being able to answer questions, et cetera. So I think you might be able to summarize better than I.
It was a pleasant eight hours in the Council on Aging Building. But as it is in most years, much of the day was spent by bringing department heads in and quizzing them about their budgets, as they have been in the past, but it's usually follow-up questions that the warrant committee asks as they're getting down to the final wire. The first part of the day is trying to come to a consensus of what their revenue estimate is for at least the initial pass on the budget. And then to go through all the various different departments and talk about what their issues are and what final questions they have for them and so forth. And then after several hours of that, it becomes a time to sit down and try to figure out how to apportion what money in the initial consideration of revenues that they actually have to distribute among the departments and how. And so the long and the short of it was, at the end of the day, our initial budget will be an increase of $1,479,000 over this year's appropriation, which
Fabulous.
Which should be enough to forestall the very ugly PowerPoint that we have been parading around town for the last seemingly months. But, I mean, it's not exactly the number we had for level service funding, but it should be enough to forestall any of the layoffs and such that were projected in that budget. So what we will have to do now is to just figure out exactly how that number comports with a budget, so that going into town meeting, we know the effects of that level of funding, what precisely it will mean to us, which certainly is, should be a much easier scenario to come up with than the original one of no dollars above level, above level funding. So this, it'll take a little more work in the administrative meetings and in the finance subcommittee, but I think it's certainly a much easier projection to make. So that's where we are now. It's the, it will change, as it usually does between now and town meeting, because we're still in an early stage on state revenues, among other things. The warrant committee took a slightly less conservative tack on local aid than they had initially, but it's still more conservative than, say, the governor's budget proposal is. And so there's going to be some maneuvering in that between now and May, and probably there'll be some, you know, not terribly large, but possibly some minor perturbations in the whole budget scenario between now and the beginning of the town meeting. But this is probably a 95% final version of what will be in the warrant. So.
That's great.
Mr. Walker.
I think a few thank yous are in order. First, to our chair, Mr. Pavlicek, and the superintendent, I think you were both quite articulate on Saturday in discussing our needs and our challenges. I think we ought to thank Selectman Tom Hurley, who was a very strong advocate on Saturday for the schools. Thanks to the superintendent and her leadership team for a process that I think yielded some very thoughtful and very well-constructed recommendations that formed the basis for this discussion, and I think allowed everyone to understand what the impacts would be of I think we certainly should thank the Glover PTO, particularly, and the other PTOs and individual parents that we heard from, who talked about the music programs, the visual arts programs, and how important those were. But particularly to the Glover PTO, because I think they were very strong advocates with our local officials, elected officials, and our state-elected officials. And I think, and with some of the warrant committee members as well. So I think all of those things had an impact, and of course, thanks to the warrant committee for appropriating the 1.479 million.
And just to put one more name into, one member of the warrant committee, Cheryl Taguayas, who chaired the school subcommittee, which is not an easy subcommittee of the warrant committee to chair, as Mr. Walker will attest to. There's a lot of work involved in the subcommittee, and she did very well for it, with our budget on Saturday.
I think it should be known that, and our superintendent knows this, I was in touch with Cheryl for at least a couple of months before we actually got to the warrant committee on Saturday. And the amount of work that she put in, the amount of background work that she put in that she will never tell us, is phenomenal. And I think she did a wonderful job on Saturday in remaining calm, and at the last minute, putting in the bus money for 79,000, which was great. We didn't expect that. But she did a tremendous amount of work, and I think she deserves a lot of credit.
May I say something?
Oh, of course.
Mr. Walker referred to a team. And so on behalf of the students and the teachers and the Milton Public Schools and all the parents, we work with the finance subcommittee and the school committee as a whole as a team. And so this leadership group, going back to their schools and working on this budget, they owned it. And they feel that they are direct team members with that finance subcommittee, Mary Kelly, Dennis Cohane, and Leroy Walker, and visited by Kristen Bagley Jones, Glenn Pavlicek, and Lynda Lee Sheridan quite often. And it is a team. We're together in this, and the finance subcommittee, they may have said it was a leadership-proposed budget, but they edit, they send us back to the drawing board, they react to the budget. And so we felt that we were all together in on this. And again, when we were able to tell the principals, and I waited to tonight, to be able to then send out to the staff and the parents, it is huge for the Milton Public Schools. Our budget is very important to us, every single dollar is. And to Mr. Chairman Pavlicek's comments, where we would have been next year, the students in the Milton Public Schools, we are appreciative to the town, and we'll guarantee you that we will watch every single dollar, and we're accountable for every single dollar that were budgeted in the Milton Public Schools. So on behalf of the schools, to the finance subcommittee, and to the school committee, I want to thank you.
I wanted to say, like, thank you first of all, because I think, like, being here and seeing what you guys do, I know that doesn't really get out to, like, the students usually, we don't know exactly what goes on. It's kind of like assumed that it's somewhat, there's not a lot of work that goes into it, but being here allows me, allows us to see that there's like so much that actually goes into it. And if you, I feel like if you guys didn't make like a compelling argument for like getting the money, we probably would not have got it, or I don't know, I don't know how it works. But I feel like you guys definitely worked hard, and on behalf, like, I think the students, if I can represent, then I would say, thank you very much. And, yeah, thank you.
Well said.
Ms. Kelly, more on the finance subcommittee report.
I didn't know whether, just with regard to the 1.479, we needed to explain that we, we had always talked about a 1.4 number to basically not lay off any teachers or assistants, but the 79,000 would prevent us from having to raise bus fees, which was a real possibility had we not got that additional funding. So I think just parents, I guess, should be assured, you know, in this era of ever increasing prices, at least from bus fees perspective, for next year, we won't be raising it. Is that okay to say?
Excellent.
Okay. And then the last item is, we have the December And then, the last item is, we have the December expenditure report that I believe the finance subcommittee recommended.
Yes, and we would recommend approval.
Yes, we would recommend approval. So, I would move that we accept the December expenditure report and post online.
Second.
Second by Mr. Walker. Any comments on the December expenditure report? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Policy Subcommittee.
So, we've been busy, and you have several policies in front of you. I'll just walk you through them very briefly, and then, I don't know how you want to proceed, take them all in one vote, or how you want to do that.
We don't usually vote first reading, so, unless they're unchanged.
So, but there are some.
Why don't you walk through them and see what
Sure.
Yes, let, let's decide after we see the changes, whether we can vote them this evening or not. There are not any significant changes.
There are not. So, the first one that you have, the environmental health and safety of school facilities policy, we had that read by Bill Ritchie, and there were only minor little edits, changes in that one. Really, there are no substantive changes whatsoever on that. I'm sorry?
So, what are the changes? This is where, I'm not sure how we're doing this.
They were, in the mailing we got
Okay. So, I just have
In the first mailing we got, they were attached to the back with
In the first mailing, although we said we weren't going to do this anymore, Charlene actually attached the handwritten changes. What we agreed at our last meeting was, we would highlight substantive changes.
Got it, okay.
But, we're, we'll get it right sometime in the near future. So, anyway, you, what you got was the actual handwritten changes. So, we combined two sentences to make it a paragraph instead of two sentences. I mean, there, there are no substantive changes on this one.
It's more formatting than anything on this document. Okay. The next one is tobacco-free school policy, and this one did have a little bit of change, because you'll see even the title changed. So, it's now called tobacco-free and smoke-free school policy. And this is based on information we got from our attorney, that the Mass General Law is Chapter 71, will change as of May in 2012, and they recommend, he recommended, since we were already looking at this policy, that we were perfectly, it was perfectly fine for us to make some edits, to add in this one piece. So, if you look on the second page, number four, idling vehicles prohibited, and this actually will be a pretty substantial change, operators of school vehicles and/or personal vehicles are prohibited from idling said vehicles while on school properties. So, you may or may not know that our school buses can only idle for a certain amount of time, and then they shut off, or the bus drivers will shut them down, they're not allowed to idle. That is going to be extended to personal cars and school vehicles as well. So, parents waiting outside of school for their kids in the, you know, pickup line are not going to be able to idle their cars for extended periods of time, and we're looking into signage to make those changes known.
Can I ask, how will, how would that be enforced with parents?
Basically, what, what we had discussed at our meeting was to talk about just informing parents. I mean, there's not going to be someone outside knocking on windows, that's not going to be someone's responsibility, but it is part of the Massachusetts General Laws, and it is in providing a smoke-free, you know, the best environmental air quality for, for children.
So, is there a definition of time for idling?
That's not provide
Five minutes.
Five minutes? It's, okay.
So
It's for the school buses, I know it's five minutes, but
So, no longer than five minutes?
Right.
Then, I would sug, I mean, the benefit of having it in the policy, if we want it in the policy, is to tell them what it is. So, if it's five minutes, I think it should be in the policy. Is that
We were not told that it was five minutes for cars, are you, are you certain of that, Matt?
I'm not 100% certain, but the idling policy in, in general, idling law in general, not just an idling law for the school buses, but that's where it was, you know, first applied to, when it came out a few years ago. And I think it's just been amended to add all vehicles. I don't, I don't think they would have amended the time that was in the law.
It wasn't explicitly stated to us, so, I have no problem adding that if
Well, the, the revisions were made on the advice of counsel, so I think if, if we're going to make that revision, we should get his advice on that as well.
I agree.
That is, he said we needed to, to address that idling vehicles was prohibited, was prohibited. He didn't say there was a specific time requirement there, so I think we need to make sure that that is consistent with his advice.
All right, I think if the suggestion is five minutes, let's see if that's at least consistent with
Yeah.
The Massachusetts
But, but I think we, I mean, idling means running the car, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, it would be idling longer than five minutes would be what is prohibited, is that correct?
Or, or Longer than some period of time, we
Or some period of time, but, because idling, I mean, if you're standing waiting, you are idling, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, what we're saying is, if you're going to have to wait longer than, whatever the determined amount of time is, please shut off your car, is that
Right. And we'll
So
Signs to that effect.
Right, and I guess, then I would also recommend rewarding it. You know, they're not prohibited, we're, we're real, I mean, yes, by law, I guess, they're prohibited, but no one's out there enforcing it. So, what is the positive way that we want parents to act, right? And I think what you're saying is, that if the, the law is telling you, you don't want to be, have your car running for 15 minutes, waiting for your, your student to come out, whatever that timeframe is, shut off your car, and then, you know what I mean? Put it in a positive context, rather than you're prohibited from.
So, how would that read?
Let's see.
Since the, since this law is potentially changing in May, we should check with counsel to make sure that, in fact, the final iteration has been
Yeah, he
Written. Because it may be, in fact, be somewhat flux at this point, too.
He seemed pretty certain about that.
He's very certain, I can read you exactly what he wrote. But he did include the time, so we can follow up on that, and then find out.
We should check with him, we follow up with him on time.
Right.
Okay, next.
So, should we follow, we, I won't tell you the rest of the changes on that, then.
Well, say the rest, say what other changes there are.
Well, I was just going to say that because the fumes piece was added, that's also added into the first paragraph, where it says exhaust fumes.
She didn't include that.
That, that one isn't in there?
Yes, okay.
Nope.
Okay, we'll look at this, we'll look at this one again.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is
Ms. Kelly.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. So, then this is exhaust-free school policy, right, not smoke-free? Or is it, is it tobacco-free, smoke-free, and exhaust-free? Because that's really what we're talking about. Smoke is not what comes out of a vehicle, it's exhaust, right? I, I don't want to
Come on, Mary.
I'm sorry, but, smoke-free to me is referring to someone
Exhaust and smoke are not the same.
Tobacco-free means I don't want to see a cigarette, right, cigarette. Smoke-free is that I want to see a lit cigarette, because that will create the smoke. Exhaust is like, not even in the same realm, in my opinion. It's almost like its own separate policy, but
You're not going to win this one, Leroy, she's a science major.
They asked us to, or the recommendation from council was that this go with the tobacco one, because it's citing, citing the same portion of the Mass General Law, Chapter 71, 37H.
Which in itself is a little strange.
So, we're going to revisit this.
We'll, we'll take, we'll take that under advisement.
General Law being strange, how could that be, Mary?
Yes. Okay, the bullying policy is, has some changes in it. This was a revision with input from Alan Cron, who obviously was instrumental in getting this policy in the first place. Do you want to speak to this one?
Sure. I had a couple of meetings with Alan, and then he went back to the bullying committee. So, under the definition of bullying, the second section, we added, under C, that formerly read creates a hostile environment, we added a hostile or intimidating environment. Under the definition of cyberbullying, one, two, three, four, five, six line down, which reads communications, instant messages, facsimile communications, we added or social media, And on the page three, under prevention/intervention plan, three-quarters of the way down, where it reads in part, that the procedure shall, shall provide for immediate notification pursuant to regulations promulgated under this subsection, we added by the superintendent or the principal in consultation with the superintendent to the local law enforcement agency. Those were the changes.
And I also just want to note that this policy wasn't, was relatively new, and didn't need to be revisited at this time, but since we were doing the all of policy A, we chose to revisit that again.
There, there was some discussion about the definition, but as it turned out, they had tracked that entirely with the statute, so we left that alone.
The only thing I'd say is where you, minor point, where you said social media, media, i.e. Facebook, Twitter, I think that wasn't meant to be an inclusive list, so it should be
No, AEG, right.
EG, Facebook, Twitter.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about that one? The next one is ADDA, it's the criminal offender record information, otherwise known as QUORI. The only change that was made to this is the title of DCJIS, Department of Criminal Justice Information Services, is changing, has changed from the Criminal History System Board. So, you'll see that the acronym has changed, and that is the only edit that is made in this document. Mrs. Kelly, sorry.
So, the school committee is mentioned in a couple of different places with regard to, I guess, obtaining QUORIs, and I don't know that we have any role in QUORI, except to make sure that the administration is, you know, getting QUORI where appropriate. So, I just have a
Mrs. Kelly, that's quoting the Mass General Law, Chapter 71, 38R.
This whole thing is?
At the top of the page, it says, right under the title.
So, this entire policy is the law, is, is that what you're saying?
Those four paragraphs, first four paragraphs, are just a recitation of the law.
Again, who's making the laws up there? We have no role in QUORI.
Your legislators are making them.
No, but I guess I'm just throwing it on the table. I don't think we have any role in this. I mean, I've served for many years, and I've never been asked, nor would ask, to have anything to do with QUORI, I guess is my concern.
So, would you, what would you like us to do?
I'd like the law to be changed. Something to do about that.
Just further down in the, in the policy, where it goes to application, after the law is cited, the following shall be designated as the persons who will be reviewing and handling QUORI, and then it does at that point, identify specifically the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the self-central office administrative assistant. And if you notice, the verbiage at the end, in Section 5, that was added, in the event that there's a conviction, information that is received may be used as a basis of disqualification, you have to give it, give that information to the applicant, but farther down, that confidentiality remains, confidentiality remains a priority. In practice, there's only one person, there's only two people that see QUORIs of every individual that we have through that process, which is every full-time employee, every part-time employee, and every volunteer, and it's Sean Walsh and myself.
Right, and so, I guess, I would ask if perhaps we would entertain removing the, the law portion of this, and just start, in starting with, you know, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Chapter of Law, and then get into how we're actually, what our policy is, how we execute on this. Because I think, if I was to read this, it's very confusing. It would, it would, the law would lead you to believe that the school committee has a role in a QUORI, and we have none. And, and so, I think it makes more sense, again, to start with how we, what our policy is for executing on our obligation, which the school committee has no role in.
I think that's a bad idea. I, I would put it in quotes, just to make it clear that it's the law, I don't think we should take it out. I think, I think it, it is important to provide, in this particular case, to provide some context. The statute provides the context. I, I don't think it's a good idea to take it out. But if you put it in quotes, then it's clear that it's the law and not the policy.
Given that it's indented that way, I don't think there's a need for quotes, I mean, that's, there's
Yeah, I mean, it's presented here as the law, I obviously didn't
Bibliographic format.
At the beginning, but now I do.
I mean, I think that there aren't many policies that we've looked at. Actually, this is the only one in Section A that specifically states the statute, and most of them just reference it, so I think it's a good reason that, that they've done that.
So, so in other words, if you were to look at the MSC template, it would have the law in there, is that right?
These, these were based from that, I don't, I haven't looked at that one, I haven't cross-referenced it, so we can do that if you want.
All right, that's fine, I can
Forgive me.
This, this particular policy is, assures for the safety of every student in the Milton Public Schools, and when I saw those references, Ms. Kelly, I just think that they were covering maybe a district that, you know, the superintendent was a principal, or principal was a superintendent, or really a designate.
Right, I, I have no problem with principal, superintendent. Again, we're policymakers, we are not, we don't execute on anything except for creating a budget, and a budget is a policy. So, I guess that's where I think this crosses over a line from what the intent of a school committee is.
Well, the first sentence of it, though, the law says, the school committee, I'm just to paraphrase here, shall have access to and shall obtain. So, it is possible that a school committee could designate itself under this law as the QUORI officer.
I guess is where I
Now, rationally, we have chosen not to do that, but the law, the law is what the law is.
It's, right, it doesn't say we have to, it says we can.
Yep. And we choose not to.
And when you read further on, you read our, our policy is to not have the school committee responsible for it.
All right. A.D.
Next.
Well, the next one we wrote at our retreat, so
Collectively.
Collectively, all of us, so hopefully there aren't any challenges with that.
I wasn't sure, did we come to a consensus on number two and what the title was?
Yes.
I thought we were going to think about that, no?
Excellence in Teaching, and we were going to change the other documents to be consistent with that.
Yeah, is that, okay.
All right. So, just running through these quickly, the first reading of ADD was just editorial changes, this first reading of the tobacco-free school policy, I think we will not act on tonight, as we're going to have, we have a question for counsel on, on wording and so forth, and the, and the technical nature of exhaust fumes. The bullying policy, I think
No substantive
There's no substantive changes, nor QUORI, and ADD was, was a consensus read as it was. So, we could, I would say, with the exception of tobacco-free, move to either, adopt the changes or reaffirm those that were not changed.
So, move to approve the policies, the following policies as, as submitted and as amended in this discussion. Environmental health and safety of school facilities, bullying policy, criminal offender record information, educational philosophy and core values.
Second.
So, we have moved and seconded to adopt what So we have moved and seconded to adopt what amounts to on the agenda, policies A, C, D, and E under number eight, as amended here tonight. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous, that's five now. Anything else from the policy subcommittee?
We're meeting this week to take up manual, Section B of our manual, or begin that, and look at the naming of the building.
And we're still occurring social networking.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Next is a facility subcommittee report, which I'm informed, we have nothing to report.
We have nothing to report, Matt, right?
Okay, that's brief. Next would be old business, a top, a response to citizen speak. Any agenda items for our next meeting?
There's probably new policy on it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll keep policy running for a while, I think. And we have a motion to, accepted to enter executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations with the community schools, the ASME custodial unit, and non-unit, and negotiation strategy with non-unit administrators, as well as some minutes, which we don't need to explicitly state, we'll move into executive session.
Second.
It's moved by Mrs. Sheridan, seconded by Mrs. Kelly, this requires, I'll not to, we will, didn't finish my motion, we will adjourn from executive session, not returning to open session. And this requires a roll for a vote, Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan.
Yes.
Mr. Cohane.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Kelly.
Yes.